I'd like to call the meeting over for March fifth, two thousand twenty-five. We have a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Warren, build a sign.
Yep.
Approve the agenda.
We did approve the March fifth, twenty twenty-five agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes to the last meeting?
There were two weeks in there.
Yes, there was.
I move to approve the minutes from the February nineteenth?
Was it? It was two.
Last two, Michael.
Well, why don't we just table, why don't we just table that right now? Go get, go get them.
Absolutely.
And so we'll move on from that. Town administrator, weekly update?
No update this week.
No update, okay, awesome. Liaison update, Tom?
Yes. Spent some time talking with Mike Roy about some of the financial statements and he's got some thoughts about how we may be able to further streamline them and so we're going to continue that discussion. We'll bring those forward to the board at some future date. That's streamlining the actual lot of report itself, the number of pages. I think there was a lot of work done this year to do so, if you had a chance to look through them. Have those been posted? I believe they've been posted on the website, so everyone should have them. I think they're improved, but he has some further suggestions and I think we'll continue and make improvements. Met Monday night with the Warren Finance Committee. I think it was a, got through all of the warrants and had a chance, they had a chance to ask any questions and there were some open items and later on in the agenda, we're going to be going through those. EMA, we had a, what was it called?
Workshop.
A workshop today, thank you. An emergency management ordinance workshop today at four o'clock. Our EMA director, Phil Crusoe, is still here?
No.
Really led a great meeting to go through the ordinance and solicit feedback from, from all of the department heads and the select board.
He does some good feedback.
He did, I think it was a great meeting. He, he, he's, he's quite good, he's very careful of the man. And so we had a chance to go through that, made a bunch of revisions. He's going to redraft that and we'll have a chance to discuss that again, or are we just going to take it to the public hearing?
We'll send it to electronically, but we'll certainly get it on the.
So that's all I'm hoping to add and I think it's a great ordinance, great work. That's all I have, sir.
Sure. Nothing on the transfer station, nothing on animal control. Mary Grant set a tentative schedule for what they want to do this year. Spring cleanup is going to be Saturday, April twenty-sixth. Pumpkin patty for October, it's October eleventh or a rain date of the nineteenth. And community picnic, Saturday, July twelfth. There may be a bluegrass thing there or not on that particular day, so listen to that.
Cool.
That's all I have.
Okay, Dan?
For the fire department, I worked with the chief to get the numbers to the town administrator in regards to the silent discussion that took place at the last select board meeting. The recreation committee, the rec director has released that survey asking residents if there's any interest in the rec having a baseball program. It was sent home with students and also is on the Facebook page. So if parents haven't filled that out, please fill that out so the rec director and the committee can make the decision as to whether or not they're going to go forward with a baseball program this spring. And their next meeting is going to be March twenty-fourth at six P M. If anybody's interested in joining. For the conservation forestry committee, I worked with the chair, Michael, and town administrator to get, last fall, the forest conservation committee had gotten a draft of an ordinance for the committee that we had tabled to this town meeting. I forgot about it, I remembered it going through the draft articles and I do just want to give a huge shout out to Jennifer for working her magic and getting all that and you're going to see what that is coming up on the agenda under the business. So we worked on that, thank you Jennifer for both with the fire department and the conservation forestry committee doing all of that behind the scenes work.
Nice, cool. That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
John?
School department, tomorrow night, the school committee is going to be holding their final budget meeting. So at the end of the night, we should have all the numbers for their coming year. Planning board tomorrow has a public hearing on a four house division on Fox's Ridge. And cemetery committee will be meeting next Monday. That's it, all I got.
Nice, okay. My solid roots, road committee, I met with the road committee last night, I think it was a good meeting last night, a lot of discussion, a lot of some different ideas. As far as I know, at the end of it, the road committee is going to try to come up with some sort of a plan to present to the lake associations on, you know, something different than the Article forty-three. We did discuss the funds that we put forward to keep this Article forty-three still active. And so, yeah, it was a good meeting, a lot of discussion and municipal grounds, we do have, we're still working on the.
Just about complete.
Yeah, just about complete on the, the deed there for the monument there. So, but, okay, department head, committee chair updates, any? Nope, I don't see any. Old business, none? New business, executive session, do we hear a motion?
I move to go into executive session.
I was just wondering if there's any action that's likely to come out of that executive session?
I don't believe so.
Could we, should we move that to the end?
No.
Okay, all right, I've been told no.
I move to go into executive session, M R S A, four oh five, six A one dash personnel at six ten P M.
Second, all in favor? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we come out of executive session, M R S A, four oh five, six A one dash personnel at six forty-five P M.
Second, all in favor? Okay, no decisions? Okay, where are we now? Forest conservation ordinance.
So in front of you, you have a draft ordinance, as Dan mentioned during his update, this is something that has been done and created for several months with everything going on, some shifting. We just didn't move it forward as soon as we would have liked, but with the board's permission, we would at least like to put the placeholder on the April warrant, add it to the schedule for the public hearing, which I'm hoping will be March nineteenth. We will have it on the website and the Warren Finance is early as tomorrow. It is a very clean, straightforward ordinance, I don't expect that it'll cause a lot of issues anywhere and certainly we'll invite the chair and Dan to the finance meeting on Monday, to see if they have time to look at it.
We don't have to vote on that.
No, I'm just looking for permission to move it forward.
Sounds good to me. Guys, I don't think it's good.
Yep.
So, Warren Finance looks for those things tomorrow. The conservation forestry committee, they took some, took a format of one of our other ordinances, made some changes and then a variety of people.
One of the committee meetings, I think. It looks like a really professional job, nice job.
And then Jennifer did a lot of work in the last twenty-four hours to make some edits and stuff, so.
Looks good, all right.
Okay, so we're going to move this place, awesome. Okay, Article forty-three, Quest Lake Side Road Association, Mr. Lloyd?
Sure.
Hold up.
I'm Jay Ward, I'm the chair of the road, sorry. And so the road committee did meet last night and they had before them the Lakeside Road Association application, hopefully.
So they have the invoice for the work in front of them.
Okay.
So just about, I'm sorry, just so the new flakman knows, so these applications, if they don't have everything that's indicated, it needs to be in here as far as all the prior paperwork, if you read this first couple of paragraphs, they don't make it to the road committee. So when it gets this far, you know that we've done the checklist, the committee has done the checklist and now they're making a recommendation on their work.
Most of these roads I've put in, I've gone through so many times.
Right.
Yep, so it's all been approved by and recommended to the selectmen for approval, three thousand dollars for the work on Lakeside Road.
May I ask a question? You said that most of these roads that put in have done it a number of times. I would imagine all private roads are eligible for these funds. Why not?
Well, we discussed this last night a little bit.
Yeah, we could, we could have a workshop on this.
We did last night, I think.
Is there just a limited number of roads that qualify?
Well, Jay, you want me to answer this? I'll answer it. So, so we got Article forty-three because the state of Maine statute says we can't spend public funds on private roads. So when Article forty-three was put through, what it done is a lot because of a great pond. Okay, and then, but there's stipulations also beyond that. Great pond, it has to have a lake study, it has to have a statutory road association, a bunch of stuff, okay? Which a lot, some of the, a lot of the road associations don't qualify for. So not everybody qualifies.
So it's, it's a pot of money really benefiting a limited number of roads?
At this point in time.
Let me just say that it is benefiting the lakes rather than the roads. This is all intended to help mitigate pollution into our lakes.
Jay, but at the end of the day.
I mean, the people on the roads must appreciate that the work is being done because it helps the road. And my point is it's only helping a few roads. Am I wrong?
Yes.
If I got it wrong, please tell me.
Yes, there are lots of roads connected with these road associations. So I just did an exhaustive search of it and you'd be surprised at how many roads are being serviced.
I, I appreciate that. Perhaps it's, I just don't understand the way here, but it seems to me when you have public funds that are going to provide support to a category of residents, private roads, that you would hope that those funds are being provided by all taxpayers, especially all those are private roads, would benefit from that and yet we've only got a few and I just, sometime when we have time, maybe someone could explain that to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the fact is we have laws that prohibit, so we're just trying to fit within these laws.
I appreciate what you're doing is creating.
Not a policy from you guys to live it.
Yeah, and Jay, and I want to make sure that it's clear that I'm not saying that, you know, these roads are privileged and they're, they're, they're getting all the money, it's just the way it's set up, it just doesn't look right, you know? But let me get right back to this here.
So what is the work that, because it's only certain work that can be approved, right?
Yeah, so, you know, it's going to be something to mitigate a problem or stop erosion from going into the lake, no maintenance, you know, it's going to be something that's going to last.
What are they doing on Lakeside?
They're doing some ditching, doing some check dams and retention pond, right?
Yes, yes, it's all, all call it work. To make sure that the water is being fed into the right places.
The only thing that I would, I would like to see, I think we asked, and I'm not going to ask for it tonight, but because if you take, excuse me here, Lakeside Drive, Lakeside Drive gets quite a bit of money and usually once a year they get three thousand bucks, so it's not like once in a lifetime. So, but they do a lot of work and I thought we had talked at one point about giving a location where the work's being done so we don't pay for that job we done again, you know what I mean, Jay?
Yes, yes, and I thought that it was.
On the quote, it's not on the quote, you know, so. I mean, just in future reference, I think that's something we should be doing so that we're not paying over and over for the same.
Uh huh, sure.
And we're not supposed to be doing that, this is supposed to be to mitigate.
Of course, yep. We can do that.
Other than that, do I hear a motion?
I move to three thousand dollars for work on Lakeside Drive and deliver revenue.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Where are we now, one hour for review, Warren Finance Committee questions?
Okay, so the first question raised by the Warren Finance at the beginning of the meeting was regarding the reinstatement of the government activities, the money, the six hundred and sixty-some-odd thousand, give or take, it was reinstated. So we reached out to the auditor.
Oh, it was reclassified.
Reclassified.
Yes, that's right, yeah. So would you like me to take this one?
Absolutely.
Great, there were a number of adjustments made that are really corrections to the financial statements called prior period adjustments. And these corrections or adjustments had no effect on the budget to actual for the town or the school. It affected a set of financial statements that are prepared according to Government Accounting Standards Board that take the, the town's financials and the school's financials. And really what those, what they're designed to do is to reflect the revenue that are received and the expenditures, all of which go into the calculation of the tax rate. That's what residents care about. The tax rate was set at this, what of the money did we get in and how did we spend it? And that's how those financial statements are prepared. The Government Accounting Standards Board says, eh, you know, that's not full correct accounting, that's accrual accounting, I'll say. So you have to do a full set of statements that includes things that quite frankly residents don't care about and I think most people trying to manage their affairs of the town don't care about, depreciation expense. Now, the, the town's P and L doesn't include depreciation expense. Pension liability changes, that's with the main purrs. Pension liabilities go up and down all the time, they go up and down based on investment return, based on interest rates. We don't flow that into the town's P and L, it's captured in this fully accrued set of financial statements. So those, those are the kinds of adjustments that were made. They affected fixed asset corrections, presumably there, they found some assets that weren't properly recorded in the financial statements. No impact on the town's financial statements. When I say the town's, I mean, look at what the budget actuals are, look at our reserve and fund balances, no impact. There was a correction to the education fund, I'm not quite sure what that was, it was fifty-six thousand dollars, but I understand that also had no impact on the, on the town's budget actuals. Accrued compensated expenses, these are a recording of a liability for the value of everyone's vacation time at the end of the year. Jennifer's owed X number of days, you know, other employees have X number of days, you calculate what that is if it was all paid out on June thirty and that's a liability that the town has. Those liabilities are not recorded in what I'll call the town's operational statements, they are recorded in this, these official statements. And there was another small adjustment for some other escrow funds that were reclassified. So hopefully that explains it, does anyone from Warren Finance have any questions? Okay.
Perfect, thank you, Tom. We started then going through the warrant articles, just give you guys updated, just in case you didn't bring your copy. The first question, so, and we can kind of talk about it as we get them together, but the first article on here is a housekeeping article that has allowed the select board to appropriate and expend money of up to fifteen thousand dollars from the assigned fund balance. If there's some type of anticipated, unanticipated expense, anything over five thousand, requires the advice and recommendation of Warren Finance. The Warren Finance point on that essentially was with the fifty thousand dollar contingency, as they look at it now, there's sixty-five thousand dollar contingency, so they're asking you to consider maybe joining them together, maybe just do fifty, maybe stick to sixty-five. They didn't come out and say it, but I sensed that they would like to give a recommendation on it, but that's the next question for the board to address.
Would you like me to?
Yep.
Okay. Actually, I thought it was a good comment that they made, it was a good observation by the Warren Finance Committee. You know, how much should the contingency fund be? Should it be the fifty that we have set aside in the budget for contingencies and the fifteen thousand, or can we live with fifty? You know, if, if we go with fifty and we end up having other issues that come up, we'll simply have to go to a special town meeting. I'm personally fine with fifty thousand dollars and eliminating this article, is that clear?
You could either eliminate it or we can just change the number, yeah, so I guess the only, if I hear it staying up, does the board agree just five thou, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand, we don't need sixty-five.
I talked to David earlier and he was fine with the fifty thousand. What about the second piece of it, expenditures in excess, do you want that on there or do you want it to just be a contingency line like you had originally?
That is to be, require the advice and recommendation?
Advice and recommendation.
Personally, as I understand it, on the contingency fund, the board already has the authority, at least given what was done in the prior year warrant. And even if it, even, the Warren Finance Committee is, is, their position doesn't create any binding obligation on what the board does. I would suggest we simply leave it at the authority of the select board, but we'll also notify the Warren Finance Committee when, when we're using it and we'll explain to them why. But, you know, if they want to take a position, they can, but I don't think we should have to have a multi-step process. I think the board is vested with the authority to do this and we ought not to confuse that with some of the review.
Also, back when we originally did this, where we actually had the finance committee give a recommendation on it, it was only three board members at the time, it's five now.
Yeah, good point.
So, you know, I think the town has, you know, done that so there's more oversight, so I don't believe this is stuff we have to take.
And I think that, you know, and I hate to take their time too, because if their recommendation, you know, as important as it is, doesn't have any bearing on that, if you talk about these contingencies or the use of contingency at these public meetings, each, you know, if it ever comes up again, they can certainly come up and give it.
Well, I was going to say, if we, if we're going to draw on the contingency, we will have a discussion at a certain meeting, but is that what you think?
Yes, yeah.
It's going to be videotaped, residents can see it and.
Yeah, honestly.
Whatever they want about it.
It's a, it's a process where, you know, say it does go to the Warren Finance and they say, no, we're going to do it anyway.
Yeah, if we want to do it.
So it's a waste of time.
So. It's a, it's a type of thing that we don't use lightly either.
No, no.
You know, it's, it's.
So are we?
So we're signing that article altogether?
I would, I would move that we eliminate this article.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
That was my recommendation.
And, and add a line to the, to the contingency.
Will we get there?
Okay, fine, all right.
We're trying to get that done all at once.
We've got to keep that order, they're going to be flipping pages, all right, so we're good with that one.
Yeah.
The next one's housekeeping, all set, next one's all set, flipping, do we have a move, Tom? Next one is all set. All right, roads, there, there was no direct question, there was no direct question from the finance committee on the wages, they did want to ensure that the laborer with no equipment had an increase and we did the calculation, found last year, found they did, so there were no issues with that article.
What was the issue with that?
Well, there was no issue, they just, the question came up, nobody knew if the twenty-six had an increase, if, if just the equipment, if it had a three and a half percent increase. And we found it was twenty-five last year.
Yeah, it's like you have all the increase.
Yeah, just shake your head, it was twenty-five last year.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Seems like when you're in class and you're not paying attention, they call on you. All right, don't forget to mention the road postings. All right, so that one was done. Snow clubs, no questions on that, all right, here's our question.
Where are you now? I mean, we went from roads to snow clubs.
Well, because there was, because we answered the road one, the next one was snowmobiles, no issues, so now we're going down to the.
Did they ask how much that was?
Which one?
The snowmobile payment.
They did, but it wasn't on my note, but Leslie said, so I took it as.
What club, what club we sending this money to?
We, we estimated three thousand, I think it's Nelson Valley.
Are you satisfied?
Snow, snow something.
You're satisfied, okay.
I'll make sure you get it, I forgot that one, Tom.
Yeah. That's my, I'm here, Jennifer.
Thank you, I wish you would take those, I had all these pages and I missed that one. Well, what did, what'd you say, snow blowers, snow blowers?
Snow goers.
Something like that. I know it was something. Snow goers.
So as we go, go along here, Jennifer, we asked, are we just answering these questions?
You're just answering them tonight, yeah.
Yeah, good idea.
You guys have seen them all, so I'm going to soon speak up at this point if you don't like an article.
And the process is we kind of, we will take a vote on these.
No, you're going to make any last minute changes tonight.
We're just answering questions for the Warren Finance though.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I guess we should make it clear, if the board has any changes, I mean, you've all seen this and had it, and the soon who don't. We're going to give it to them Monday, completely complete, you're going to make the recommendations and then you're going to make yours Wednesday.
Okay, great.
Yep.
All right, so the next one, we are talking about authorizing the select board to solicit bids for the contract and we have lots of questions on this. All right, the first question on this came up was who is going to write the contract? Originally said the board of selectmen, we did say that, I did say that there may be input from the road commissioner, but we need to be very careful in case he bids on the job.
I assume it's actually going to be written by council.
Okay, good answer.
Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
With our input about.
Yes and no, I mean, I, I do contracts and I get contracts from other towns, I think what you do is you take.
Put a draft together.
Yeah, we, we have put a draft, we don't still want it sent to him because he's not, not going to know what the job entails.
No, I understand, we have to provide.
So what, what, what we can do, or whoever's designated to do so, we can put a draft together, obviously have input with, with Will, you know, so much, so much input, okay? And the reason I'm saying that is because, you know, in case family or anybody gets the contract, you don't want to make it look like we're writing a contract for an individual. I'm not saying that's the case, but just be transparent, I guess, and, but we're going to have to do that draft. I don't feel doing a draft until we get put through makes any sense. So, but I think we look at the contracts in the neighborhood towns, I know these contracts pretty well, so I pick them apart all the time. Because every contract's different and because of my, there's many of, that I've done, I can tell you whether or not it's good, bad or ugly. So I like to work with the road commissioner and make, you know, see if we can do that, but to be the select boards making the draft.
Right, and you said that road commissioners will have limited.
Yes, yes, you know, but, you know, obviously, what, what we're looking at doing is, you know, with, with the contracts going to be part, the part that we got to worry about is what it entails, what does the job need to be done?
And that rolls into the next question is, they asked what the road commissioner's job in the wintertime will be if the contract passes.
Whatever he wants to do, I guess.
In regards to winter maintenance, anything, nothing?
Depends on what's, look, there are going to be business terms that need to be defined in the contract.
Yes.
And that will describe what their obligations, responsibilities are and are not, and Will can determine from that what's left over and, you know, he could choose to do that. But I think the business terms, setting the business terms is the responsibility of the board.
Yes.
And I think with Will's input, because of his expertise, but I think the writing of the contract is the responsibility of council.
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so we define the business terms.
Yes.
You know, how should things work on a day-to-day basis, what do we expect and, but then we turn it over to council to do.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to write the contract.
No.
I want to put the parameters of.
Yeah, we take the draft.
What I'll call business terms.
Highlight the pieces. And we'll open up, if it's okay, we'll open up this piece after, let me get through all the road questions, is that okay, David?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you putting out to bid as the whole town or one side versus two?
I would recommend two, two sides, just like Shapley and Sanford does a west side and east side, Newfield does one, but they only have like, I think, twenty-six miles anyways, it's half, it's about what half our town is. The, the issue with doing one is you're going to have to find a contractor that can do all of that. So what's going to end up happening is you're going to find, guys like myself can do it, but you're going to have to run into a guy like me. Instead of smaller guys who can handle a half town, which what happens, it makes it competitive, makes it more competitive at that point. At least that's my opinion. We can do one, but I don't believe that's the way we should do it.
The board feel like if we leave it two sides and contract it that way?
I just got to ask a question, what happens if we only get one qualified bidder?
Well, that's, with any contract, they could do both.
Yeah, one bidder could bid on both sides.
I mean.
Okay, absolutely.
I mean, I did that in Sanford, they could fit in, but.
That's fine, but so they could.
They could, but I think splitting it in half works better because it gives an opportunity to smaller guy to be able to pick up that side. Then you don't have to go to the bigger contractors, which that's where it's going to get expensive.
Who is going to pay for the sand and salt in the shed? It said town, but we wanted to be sure.
That's, that's something.
We'll continue to buy the material.
And that's something that the road commissioner is going to be obligated to be putting up.
That's our next question, did you see my notes?
No, but I can, I can see it.
Who is, who's going to be doing the stockpiling, is the question?
That would be the road commissioner.
Who's going to load the trucks?
They'll be loading themselves, the contractor.
So they'll have the equipment there to do that?
Who's equipment's going to be there? Who's equipment's gonna be there? Whoever wins the bid.
Whoever wins the bid.
Will have a piece of equipment there to load it up.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I believe those were all the actual questions I wrote down regarding the contract.
Does that sound right, Will?
I, yeah, that's fine, I just.
Come on up, come on up.
Yeah, that's all fine with the, I've had some questions about why we split it in half, and I think, I, I think we could get a little bit better price, split it in half, and it takes the burden off one individual.
That's what I.
You're right, right, I mean, the town, town's a big town, like I said, you're gonna have to, there's really not a lot of people around geared up to take over the whole town. So splitting it in half, I think, is, is the best bet, and like, doesn't put a big burden on one person, you know what I mean, so, that's, you know, that's how I present it, that's how I like to have it.
Do you agree that, um, put up the salt, all that's gonna be on the road commissioner?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I mean, I think that'd be just another added cost of the contract, is gonna be, sure, we don't, we probably don't wanna go down with that.
Well, we don't, we don't, you, you don't want a contractor doing the salt order and all that, that's something that we gotta make sure you're taking care of, so.
That's pretty standard practice.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, most towns, like, you read the contract, the road commissioner, road, it does, you know, order the salt.
Well, we're probably gonna get a better price there, we're ordering it.
Right, we get the.
We get the best price anyways.
No, I mean, rather than paying it to a contractor.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you're gonna get, you're gonna get my.
No, that, everything sounds fine.
And, and, and I, I think when, last time I talked to you, we talked about in the contract doing like a, um, 'cause the concern I got was like, the contract in Shapley only allows us to have up to like six hundred tons of salt a year, straight salt. Um, so we're gonna have to try to come up with some number, so we can kinda, you know, iron that out, but I'm sure that's something we'll talk.
Oh, yeah, that's no problem.
So, the, the plan is, the Finance Committee, if the article passes in April, we're gonna immediately start working on the process.
Yeah, 'cause I think the way we talked about doing it is, we have to, because we have to get the bid out, because, because June, we're gonna vote on the money.
Right.
So, it, you know, we gotta get on it.
Yeah, no, I just wanna, just, go on to my list.
The reference to the, sorry, I got it. The three years, 'cause this comes into the, the amount that we're requesting in June in the draft. And I understand how we got to the eight hundred thousand dollars. From my perspective, I think that's gonna be confusing to, to residents, you know, why are they being asked to put up money for three years? When all we really need is a hundred thousand dollars. We got a two hundred, for, for, for the coming year, we got a two hundred fifty thousand dollar existing budget, we're estimating it's gonna be three fifty. So, it seems to me that warrant should be for a hundred thousand dollars, and if you, otherwise, people are gonna come into the booth and they say, eight hundred thousand dollars. Number one, it's well overstated, and I think it'll be hard for people to understand, and unnecessarily so. So, I understand the other towns do not appropriate all the money for the three-year term of the contract.
With Sanford, I don't know how Sanford does it.
I have no idea how Sanford appropriates their money.
Tom, well, Tom asked me about Shapley and Alfred, and neither one, they don't, they take, they, they have a blur.
When I, when I, the concern I had was this.
You're being very safe.
Okay, is, for people out there in the public, when I sign a three-year contract with any town, as long as I do my obligation, I am gonna be paid. Now, whether or not the town, say, for some reason, next year, it's like, you know what, that was a little expensive, uh, we're gonna vote that down, I'm still getting paid. Okay, I'm gonna call my lawyer, I'm gonna get paid. So, that's the only, only problem I have with it. So, my, my suggestion was that we, we put it in a reserve, vote it in now, but I do understand Tom's concern, because what happens is, is right. We're literally gonna do three years all at once, and, 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 you know, it's, it's a shock to the system. Uh, it's whether or not, I think we talked about before, a lot of, a lot of credit and all that.
I, I think that could be, I, I think that could be used.
Something that we could guarantee the contract.
I'm not, I'm not worried about the town not paying their bill. I just, what I would be more worried about, and I, I just use the hypothetical, 'cause I've seen some crazy stuff go down in town, okay? Some silly stuff being put forward, it never usually goes through, but, that somebody would go up and make a, a motion to, you know, not put the money forward.
I, I think we ought to be clear that it is a three-year contract that cannot be broken by a town.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have legal.
Yeah, 'cause that's the problem is.
I mean, that's really what you're after.
Yeah, because.
You don't want the towns, the townspeople to be able to say, no, after one year or two years, I wanna stop this. If, how is it done generally in the market, do you think, Will? Do you think people are looking for a three-year deal guarantee?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
That's what I would think.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, it'd be really tough, I think, for somebody to. Well, I, I, I think, when I was listening to the Finance meeting the other night, I kept hearing this one-year contract getting thrown around. And what happens with that, okay, is, there's only so many guys in the area that can actually do that. Okay, who, and, 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 hopefully, they don't have, already have a contract, most of them do, okay? But, most people don't have three or four plow trucks sitting in the yard ready to go, so they're not gonna take on a one-year contract, take on a huge financial burden for a one-year deal, okay? And hope you make some money at it. On a three-year deal, you're gonna take that financial burden, okay, because you, hopefully, in three years, you're gonna get an average, and you're gonna make some money at it. But nobody, I can do it, Will could probably do it on a one-year, okay, but nobody else is gonna do that, because nobody can, unless they have this stuff already in hand.
I just think we ought to make that clear, that it is a three-year commitment, and people shouldn't be thinking that they could stand up in the second year and say, no, we don't want to have this contract. That won't be an option, if this.
So we can, we can get rid of the not to exceed, and we can change the article, just flat out say, you know, execute a three-year contract.
Yeah.
You know, if that.
Yeah.
A binding three-year contract, or, I don't know, find the right words. Um, 'cause I, I think that's what we envision, and we ought to make sure it's clearly stated.
I have no, no problem, as long as, whoever's gonna sign this contract's all gonna sign it, no one does a three-year obligation, they're gonna get paid. So, as long as we're fine with that, the money part of it, I mean, legal will tell us what we have to do.
Right.
And, so, I just, I just wanna cover our tail on this.
See, the, the only out for the town should be some kind of breach of contract. For non-performance of one thing or enough. No, no, I'm saying, they, they, the quality isn't there, or whatever, then we ought to be able to breach that contract, but if they live up to the terms, we have to as well.
Yeah, and Shapley actually has, yes, for the contract.
What most contracts do, like, the contracts that I've dealt with it, you usually got two options, you either do a bond, or they do a retainer, okay? What happens, we normally do a retainer, because what happens, if you do a bond, it ends up driving the number up.
Yeah.
Because you have to pay so much more for the bond, uh, most towns, we tend to say, okay, we do a ten percent retainer, but on, on that retainage, okay? They don't get that retainage if they destroy something, they don't do part of their job, whatever, there's always something there too, that we could get out if we needed to.
Good.
I think Dan, were you gonna add something?
No, I was just saying that I, I agree with you, I'd rather be more, sorry, but it sounds like you're thinking of a happy medium, but.
Yeah.
You'd rather see a one-year money?
No, I'd rather, yeah, the one-year, it just makes sure.
I understand David's point, you know, he wants the money in the bank, so, it doesn't get voted down, 'cause if it gets voted down, we still owe the money.
A winter maintenance, I think we'll have faith that.
I think we can create guarantees through the contract that will address that issue.
Yeah.
They're still gonna go through a vote every year, though, right?
Well, we, we can't allocate money unless town floor votes it in, that's the problem.
Well, that, um.
Even if we had a lot of credit, we're still not allowed to spend it out, that's, that was the only concern I had, was, that's why I originally said that we may have to do a reserve, because we're, unless it's allocated, we can't spend it.
So, for example, you could say, raise and appropriate a hundred thousand dollars additional funds to cover the contract for plowing in the coming fiscal year. Also, or in addition to, authorize the creation of a letter of credit to fund the remaining two years, and all that means is you take some money out of the bank account, you spend it in a separate account, and that money can only be expended, assuming all the contract terms I realize, to, to the, the snowplow.
And then you're gonna raise and appropriate the.
And then we'll raise and appropriate, that was the amount of monies in year two and year three.
I mean, yeah.
But the monies are there, and.
Long, long as we have the approval to spend the money, that's what I, I wanna make sure of.
Yeah.
And we'll have council closely on that wording. Okay. Leslie, I think we're good on that article? Okay, okay. Alright, next one was housekeeping, they're all set with that one.
Sure, we, yeah, I'm kinda losing track. There's less than bid, housekeeping, there's no numbers on here yet.
I know there's numbers, because you keep adding articles, I'm not renumbering them for recons. Next one is municipal budget articles. The question that came from this was, they wanted a breakdown of the office assistant, and Warren Finance Committee, I will read this, I will, not read this, I will email this to you. After, I'll email it to you. So, the, they wanted a breakdown of the salary, so employee A is currently at twenty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, three and a half percent increase, that's ninety cents, which brings that individual to twenty-six sixty-eight. There is a possible training merit of a dollar, as training certifications aren't received. So the budget for this position was based on twenty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents times thirty-eight hours a week, times fifty-two weeks, so that employee is at fifty-four seven. Uh, the second employee currently is at twenty-six eighty-five, three and a half percent gives them ninety-four cents, for a total of twenty-seven seventy-nine. That was budgeted on forty hours based on fifty-two weeks.
Just those two employees, that's all they wanted?
On this one?
Okay.
Yeah, well, on off, the office assistant. So those two salaries equal one twelve five oh two, the difference there is gonna be FICA and Medicaid, and we'll send you that right down. Uh, the next breakdown that.
Does that address the question?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Leslie, does that address the question?
I believe it does.
I mean, can we, can we assume that if it doesn't, before I move on, that you, the committee will speak up, so that, instead of, I don't, you know, instead of asking?
Surprise us later.
Right, I'm happy to, if it doesn't, please speak up, and I'm happy to clarify, or. Uh, the next line that they were, wanted to break down was the code enforcement of the land use office, land use secretary. Currently, the employee is at twenty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, there is ninety-one cents for a three and a half percent increase, so that brings the person to twenty-six seventy-nine. There is a possible training merit of a dollar twenty-five, which would bring them to twenty-eight oh four, as budgeted on forty hours a week, which brings you to the salary of fifty-three fourteen, before taxes. Alright, so that takes care of that article, I believe. Uh, next article, health and welfare general assistance, all set with, alright, fire department. So, we know that, the number in front of the board is different for the fire department, so we know that Dan has worked, been working close with the fire chief to present some numbers. Been working the last few days on putting that forward, I had a very good meeting with the fire chief today. Essentially, he sent over a request that brought his wages to, that brought him to where he thought was a, you know, a, a better place for the range. We talked about the Mark Roy salary survey, I showed him an example of the previous survey, so that he could see what it looked like. Uh, we talked about the timeline, and that, you know, Mark indicated that he didn't realize it was for this, this April, based on our previous conversations, so he's just not gonna have time to put it all together. Wayne and I sat down and looked at some numbers, we were able to get rates from Acton, Shapley, Alfred, Biddeford, Saco, Berwick, Sanford, Lebanon Wells, Wyndham, York, and South. Today, we got those numbers together, and we, we're busy, but he had a lot of them, we got, I got some other ones. We had lots of flyers from numerous towns, and we pulled the numbers from them, so it came together pretty quickly. The average, the average for the firefighter or EMT alone is twenty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Currently, Acton is at twenty dollars and sixty-five cents. Now, Wayne did share with me that this is one of the positions that very few people are just at that rate, most of them are at a different rate. The basic average was twenty-four thirty-one, we are currently at twenty-two seventy-two. Call them the packets, or maybe packets. Um, so I'm not reading, see, I have to memorize them. The advance is at twenty-five dollars and forty-three cents, we're at twenty-three seventy-five, and then the paramedic, we are at twenty-six eighty-five, the average was twenty-seven ninety-four. So you'll see that we're only about a dollar and a half off of the average, not to say we need to be average. So the next thing that we did is, we calculated what three and a half percent would do, so how close would three and a half percent get us to those averages? And you can see that, at least for two of them, they pretty much put you in there, the others are close. So, after speaking to Wayne and, and saying, you know, I wanna be able to present something to the board with a recommendation, where can we go on this until the salary survey is, is done? I made a recommendation of five percent for all of the fire department staff. Uh, what this does is then puts them in the center of the ranges, actually, some of them will be above the range, so the paramedic will go from twenty-seven ninety-four average up to twenty-eight ninety-one. What, three of them will go above the average, so that certainly has helped, he was very thankful and appreciative, and thought that was a good start until the salary came in. So that's gonna be the recommendation, and the number that you see in your new article, the Finance Committee hasn't seen yet, it's all based on five percent down the line.
And he's comfortable?
He is very comfortable with that, and very appreciative.
Jennifer, I just think we wanna reiterate, thank you for all the work that you've put in this past couple days to get this information, data collected, very much appreciated.
So, can the board get behind a five percent until we look at the, at the rest of it? And unlike he talked about.
Five nods.
He, perfect, he's happy to, you know, once we get that salary, he knows we have a contingency fund, and that we have a June town meeting, there are other options, so he's very comfortable with where we're at. Finance Committee?
Yeah, Finance Committee, you got any questions? Yes, no?
So with the five percent, that'll put them above the average, except for the one position.
Yep.
Excellent.
Alright, fire department, um, the question, I think, gets in this one, EMA, why, or who can utilize, Ed, who can utilize the emergency management of the tower over here?
Sure, right now, the tower is channel three, in, called County Three. I guess my question would be, what do they mean by utilize the tower? Would you mean, can a cell company go on it, you mean, is that what you're looking at, or, right now, it's, it's a fire department use tower, it's for.
For just Acton or other towns?
Other towns.
Acton's, other towns.
He said any town that's in a certain area.
Anybody that's on that particular frequency, which would be anybody in the greater Acton area, including Lebanon.
Yeah, I, I didn't ask the question, so I'm not quite sure, um, what it is.
Okay.
Do you remember, anybody remember who asked it, we could follow up on that?
Dennis. Dennis, was that your question? No?
Well, it's a, it's a fire department tower utilized for fire communications.
Okay.
Uh, Shapley, Acton, Lebanon, the Newfields area, if they can hit it, but they, they are typically on a different tower, on a different channel, I mean, a different, yeah, different channel, same frequency. So, it's, it's a whole big.
So that, that frequency is dedicated to?
Yes, yes.
And ready with the proximity of that?
It's the primary dispatch channel for Acton, and most likely Lebanon.
Okay, and I, I think that's what.
Yep.
The question was.
Yeah, so there's a number of areas back in the day in Acton that they could not hit without having a tower there. I don't remember where the old tower was, was it fire station?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, you get down in that area, Fox's Ridge in that channel area, they couldn't hit the repeater back here, um, with their radios.
How's he hold the noise?
Yep, yep, so they opted to put a tower down there, and the town of Acton put the tower up, built the building and all that.
And I mean, it's, when I, when I initially looked at that, I, I just assumed it was a dedicated frequency.
Yeah.
But, um, and so I'm not sure exactly about that.
You can't put cell towers, or you can't put cell channels or anything like that on it, strictly fire tower.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next thing that they asked, not so much under the public safety, I think the question was directed to general government, but it's all kind of the same. Uh, they wanted to know what the breakdown was of the monthly premiums for each of the individual health insurances offered by the town of Acton. So we've put together a spreadsheet for Plan A, B, and C, the monthly premium for just employee, and employee and spouse, employee and children, family, the breakdown of all of the different rates, and the eighty-five fifteen split, so that will be emailed over to you.
Was this asked by any other town departments, or just?
It was asked under, um, general government.
But I think they were asking for pricing on the town's health plans.
On the town's health plan.
That's what they're getting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm assuming this, that this question must have come up with the school plans as well, I'd love to compare them to see if we could, if they were the same, it's just interesting to see different agent, you know, I mean, like both being.
Was the question asked at the school?
Committee?
I, I don't remember if it was, but it will, I, I'll ask it tomorrow.
Well, don't ask it on our part, I just love to compare.
Just curious if you're asking about the town.
Just curious if you're asking about the counting, I assume you're asking about the school as well? And so, if not, I don't understand why.
The uh, next question pertain to- We're still on the same articles.
Oh, we're still on, oh, we're talking about other public safety?
Yes, sir.
Is that where we are?
Yup. Uh, dams, they wanted a breakdown of the um, the dams. So we have the Melsom Watershed Dam Coalition that will be sent over, the budget was twenty-six thousand twenty-four. Um, one of the lines on, on the budget breakdown was just the New Field, right, the New Field Gatekeeper was one price and then the second one was the-
Volchlike.
Volchlike, I'm sorry. Six thousand five hundred and six dollars is Shapley's twenty-five, uh, Acton's twenty-five percent share of the total budget. So this covers um, eleven thousand in general maintenance, there's insurance, there's taxes, there are um, capital plans set aside and um, totaling twenty-six oh two four, so you'll get that breakdown as well for the-
Thank you.
Melsom Dam. Sorry, I'm trying to follow along, Leslie's in my notes at the same time. Safety, okay. Alright, so the, so the next one, so the roads, um, no particular question came up on the summer roads, winter roads, um, the question really, the only, the only question that came up is, you know, is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand sufficient for snow removal? And, and the response that Tom and I kind of gave was that, you know, we, we're not gonna, we don't want the voters of the town of Acton to assume that we think the contract's gonna pass. So we leave what's in there with the road commissioner has recommended, that he could do the job with if the contract doesn't pass, and then we kind of go from there. So those are his original numbers. David, did you wanna, does that sound?
No, no, I mean, I, well, definitely, I mean, well, I wanted, I wanted this in there just in case, we had to have a backup.
Well, they, they wanted if it was enough money.
Well, sure, cause we haven't even been spending that anyways.
No, I was gonna say it.
So, I mean, uh, we can't went on anymore.
Depends on the amount of snow you get, how many you want.
Yeah, hourly, I mean, yeah, we're fine with that, I think I, what did we spend last year? Hundred seventy thousand in total?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay, maybe it wasn't even that, so.
Can I?
Come on up.
Dave, this, this is uh, part of what I was asking about is if, if the current cost to the towns to do the roads-
Yup.
Is roughly two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and you're not even spending that to do the roads? And I know that, that, that this year is, had more of a normal snow year versus the previous year.
Yup.
Why does people think that going to a three-year contract is gonna cost three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and a three-year commitment makes sense to the town?
Okay, so, I'll answer that for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, even though, uh, I mean, Will could come up, but I, I'll answer most of this for you. I was road commissioner for nine years, okay? Um, I didn't make any money plowing stuff. Uh, we put our trucks on, dah 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 dah. For example, one year, we uh, we plowed, I had a seventy-six thousand dollar, that's what I was getting a year for my winter time, okay? Both road commissioners only spent fifty thousand dollars in that, in a whole winter, between, you know, so a hundred thousand between both of us, okay? If it don't snow, we don't work, okay? So what ends up happening is, um, it's tough to find help. Um, you can't get anybody that wants to jump on, put a truck on, register it, insure it, go through your DOT inspections after you just spent thirty to fifty thousand dollars for that truck, and then have it sit in the doy and not get paid for it, that's what we're coming into.
The contract would ensure that this, contract, the contract would ensure that gets some sort of stipend.
Yes, now, on, now, being a selectman, I wanna stay hourly. But would I go do an hourly? Absolutely not, I got contracts, I will never plow by the hour again because I need that financial stability knowing that I can hire this guy, I can, these trucks, the insurance is getting paid, the fuel's getting paid, dah 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 dah. So, uh, it's an awful huge financial burden on the contractor. That's, that's the one problem, is the contractor.
Yeah, and, and that's what, that's what raised the question, Dave, if, if the market cost is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do the work, why would we approve a program that is a hundred thousand dollars short?
Um, we're, we're in a situation here where uh, Will came to us, um, because obviously his other guys, you, you, you can jump in anytime, uh, that these guys can't afford plowing for the town of Acton because there's no financial stability. And, go ahead.
And just the way the last couple winters have been, you know, like last year, you know, we didn't do nothing all much, you know what I mean, I, I mean, I don't care how much you're gonna pay an hour, if it don't snow, you don't get no money, it's get to the point now where they don't wanna plow and they just, you, you can't expect that out of these guys. And what I can't do with myself on the hour, I'm not gonna take that financial burden and go buy three or four more trucks trying to find guys, I, I'm not doing it. And we're just, we're at that crossroad, every other town's doing it and, you know, I'm, I'm fortunate, should be lucky I just held off this long, I couldn't have done this two years ago, but I just, it wasn't the right timing, but now, now is the time.
Well, well, what will happen if this doesn't get approved?
Uh, well, it's like anything, we'll make it work, but it's gonna-
No, I mean, what does that mean?
Well, it's like, it's like, it's like, it's like anything, it's like when uh, we've made it work in the past, the last three times we've made it work, I mean, it, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna suck, it's gonna stress me out more than this.
Do you think you really can make it work or is it gutting you?
I don't know, I, I don't know, I haven't even thought that part, I'd like to get to the issue.
Well, I, I think when people are voting on this, it's, it's not as though, from what I'm hearing, they have an option, stay with the current program or go to fixed-price contracting. What I'm hearing you're saying, and it's consistent with what I know otherwise, hourly snow plowing is a thing of the past. Everyone's going to fixed-price contracting, so if we can't get that approved by the community, how do we get our roads priced if no one's willing to do it on an hourly basis?
Well, what's gonna happen is your services and not, not due to, you know, because your manpower is, you know, your service is not gonna be as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, the way the roads are plowed now, they probably won't get plowed the way they are, I mean.
I, I guess, I, I guess when this important questions get voted on, I think it's, I think people need to understand that, that there may not be an option here. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, it's very, very likely it could be.
And so-
I, I don't like to think like that, but it's-
No, I know you don't.
You gotta be looking at the worst-case scenario.
No, I, yeah.
If this doesn't pass, are you gonna, do you believe that you could man, man a crew next year? I know you know how many guys you're losing this year if this doesn't pass, I do know that. Um, poss, possibly, I guess. Um, you know, I guess the public's really gonna know whether or not, you know, this is gonna-
Yeah, can you pull it?
Ask if he's gonna turn his name into papers and if it doesn't pass.
Okay, come on, come on up, Lee.
Everybody get some- I, 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 what I'm trying to say is I'm supportive of Will's position and I'm suggesting that you increase the budget for the one year, it lies with the cost against Will more likes it.
But that's not the problem, cause we haven't been spending the money we have now. So they still not guaranteed the money. The problem is that if it doesn't snow, you can't charge for work. And that was the problem we've had the last couple of years, it was of snow.
Right.
So you can, maybe you could double all the rates, you could double the budget, but if it don't snow, they don't get paid.
Wouldn't you have the option of going to people and providing a, a one-year contract at the current market rates?
No.
No. And the problem is the current market rates, Lee, I came up with a three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar number, okay, because I know the rate in New Field, I know the rate in Alfred, I know, obviously know the rate in Shapley, okay, I know the rate in Sanford. Okay, so you take all those numbers, you know, do math, and you put them together and you come up with a number, and I came up with a pretty safe number of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. It could be more than that, but it also could be less than that. I have a pretty good idea right where it's gonna be. And uh, that's why I used the number I did to cover us.
What, 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 I think, what I'm hearing is that you don't have the option of modifying the arranger for next year, if you don't get the three-year.
Interesting point, interesting point.
Okay, I, I understand what you're getting, but this is the problem you're gonna have.
He wants to raise the rate.
If you do a one-year contract, just to-
As a backup.
Okay, but listen, this is what happens, you do the one-year contract, you, you're obligated because at that point, nobody's going back to hourly. So what you've done is you've put yourself in a spot.
No, I don't think that's what he's suggesting.
I, I don't know, maybe we're-
Look, you should speak to it.
There's gonna be a way to support his people.
In other words, if you had to pay hourly rates that would allow you to attract people, what would that budget look like?
Or-
Is that what you're asking?
Or, there may be another way, maybe it's a retainer for their services that is supported at the two-fifty level, but the, the other hundred thousand broken up as a retainer to make sure these guys are in line for you.
There, there is another way, and back when I was road commissioner, we presented this to the selectmen. What the, the state of New Hampshire does is they give you an hourly rate, okay? But if you have a week where you don't work, they give you ten or fifteen hours, something like, I can't remember. What it does, it makes it so that you're, you're being paid, okay? If you work a week where, uh, say, uh, they only work eight hours, it's still promised that, that amount of hours because they're, they're tied being, but the unfortunate part is, is if you look at all the other towns, the only one that pan hourly now other than Acton is Lebanon. And I don't think anybody wants Lebanon to plow roads, so. Uh, so, uh, so, so, but at the end of the day, it's, this is gonna be something, uh, public here on town floor that's gonna have to be discussed. I get out, yeah, we're going from, going from a, well, when we say two-fifty-six, is that what?
Two-fifty-six.
Two, two-fifty whatever, okay, to possibly three-fifty a year, that's a huge, huge jump. Uh, but we're not even spending that, because I think we're only spending like a hundred seventy thousand a year, if that. So, but, it's whether or not we can, we can find the help to do it. And there, there's other ways of doing it, you know, you're right.
I, I'm just trying to make it easier for Will because personally, I think he doesn't have the job.
I've, I've seen, I've seen other towns where what they've done, just to get those routes taken care of, I remember Alfred one year, one, a couple of years, I think, what they did, is they contracted out each route separately, okay, they did that. But at the same, now you're putting out the bid, so you're in the same boat.
And you gotta manage all of those contracts.
Yeah, and now, he's gotta manage all of them, where like over at Shapley, I make the call, I send my crew out, the other guy does the same thing that's on the other side of town, the road commissioner has absolutely nothing to do whether or not we go over or not.
I think it's just gonna be incredibly important that when this comes up on the floor, that you speak to it and you let them know that this is really a necessity, if that's what you believe.
Oh, no.
That you say that, you say, look, if, I don't know that we're gonna be able to plow the roads with the current way of doing things, we're not gonna be able to get the people to do it.
You know, even if we, even if we did the rates up, Lee, I mean, if it don't snow, you ain't gonna make any money.
That's where I was thinking about the retainers.
The stipend.
You come on board, you do it when it snows, this is the worst case that it doesn't get approved. And then you say, I'm gonna give you whatever that equivalent for the hundred thousand, you're gonna get that one way or another, just, just to make sure you have the people there that you're not, don't lose, it's just a thought, and you guys are, you're, I'm just, don't wanna get you in a position where you go to the town uh, meeting and you get turned down on that eight-hundred thousand and then you're stuck in a real bad position.
Will stands up and explains what's going on-
Yeah.
And gives his view on this, my guess is people are gonna listen to that.
Thanks, Lee.
Yeah, no, I, we're, I mean, we're just, we're at a heck of a crossroads right now, and I, I knew this day was gonna come and it, we're here now, so this is, you know, I put this forward and, you know,
No, no, nobody's, I don't blame you at all, but, um, but this is definitely gonna have to be something that's gonna be discussed because this is a topic.
Yeah.
Big change. We've even heard the grumbling before, or even before this contract. Been grumbling for a couple of years, so.
Oh, yeah. We are still on uh, public works, other public works, where we left off. Well, actually, we're moving down to the next one, so assuming that's good there. So the next article, uh, they're looking for, um, so dams, I already covered prematurely, but you got it. Uh, next was hourly, the rates on the individ, on the transfer station employees. So, um, we, so without, unless the finance committee wants me to go through all of them, they um, essentially are, will plan on giving them all a dollar increase and a three and a half percent. Once they get the dollar and the three and a half, that's going to give um, ranges from nineteen oh five to twenty-one forty-five for the employees. And then there's a temporary, that's sixteen seventy-five.
Public works.
That brings them up to that, nineteen oh five, twenty twenty-nine and twenty-one forty-five.
Yup.
All set. Um, the transfer station, one page, well, it's five for their copy, the one that, it's right after the winter roads.
Thank you.
Okay.
Seminical dinner.
Yep, so um, transportation rates, everybody all set with that? Those are just the hourly employees, um, the superintendent is three and a half percent increase like the other employees. Alright, so, da-da-da-da, okay. Um, next on the parks, cultures and recreation, uh, the question was raised about what the cemetery committee um, is going to do, as, what plans for cemetery work is there? Um, as I indicated at the finance committee meeting, um, they're just hearing the beginnings of the municipals' recommendation that um, they're, they're looking into, really digging into the insurance policies and liability. They do not recommend the chainsaw and several other pieces of, of equipment. Um, we're not a hundred percent ready to rule that out, but the committee knows that, um, that's a possibility, so if that happens, the idea is that they're gonna use that ten thousand to outsource, you know, with proper workers' comp and insurance companies to come in and do the work that they had intended. That really looks like the direction's gonna go, I shared that with the finance committee, so their follow-up question was, what specific committee, uh, what specific cemeteries are they going to work on? Um, Mr. Room, I think, raised that question, Joe, they haven't met since that opinion came in, so they're gonna meet on Monday and they're gonna have a breakdown. Um, but that ten thousand will go through the same process as everything else, as far as bids and everything, so, John, did you wanna add to that?
Um, yeah, I mean, I had a conversation with them today and they really, they can't specifically say at this moment what cemeteries they're gonna go out and do work on until the snow's cleared and they see what kind of damages-
That's kinda how to plan that over.
You know, since the winter, and we have dozens of cemeteries in town that they try to take care of on a voluntary basis.
And obviously, the money can only be spent on that, so if you watch script, when you-
What, what did you spend last year on repairs? Do you have a roll top yet? No, I can't, but I think we're gonna work last year.
Alright, now, next Wednesday. It's Tom's fault, he's just bad, he's just bad influence sitting next to him.
Okay, well, I mean-
I'm gonna look for you, David, real quick.
The ten thousand dollars doesn't look, doesn't sound like it's too much money to me.
You know, two trees come down, you know, they go-
Well, the tree guys, they normally get a couple thousand dollars a day for their work, they don't take a lot and burn up ten grand, and if they're not allowed either chainsaw, they're gonna have to hire people to do that stuff, which kinda sucks.
Last year, they got a nine thousand dollar approval, so this is a fact, so it's-
So it's a thousand dollar.
Thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on the cemeteries? With that, so look, I'm, transportation, fire station rates, we cover cemeteries. Alright, so that was all on that one, he go high, uh, yeah, the forest management plan was fine. The rates, uh, the social outside organizations, it wasn't a, okay.
Taking any questions?
Well, yeah, so there, there was concerns that they wanted to report to full board regarding the library. Um, they have indicated that, um, they're concerned that the, well, not concerned, library doesn't pay rent or utilities, um, you know, Mrs. Berlin has, has pointed out, and she was kind to remind us that, you know, it is a concern, um, that it really isn't a social service per se, right? It's not a, that's the concern, that it's, it's really a town, town department without being a town department, because they're not paying rent, they're not paying electricity, um, and Leslie, do you wanna come in and-
But we're not paying the employees.
No, but I think-
Correct.
Correct, we are not, she just wants it disclosed so that the public knows.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we, we give them thirty, approximately thirty-one thousand dollars for their operating budget, uh, I, I understand they, they do fundraisers and whatever. Um, however, um, and, and I've talked about this before, is that um, part of our donation to them is the space, it's heat, it's utilities, uh, and I just think that um, there should be a calculation to allocate, you know, what their, um, what that share is going to the library because we, it is part of our donation to them.
So, uh, is I understand what you're, what you're asking for is what I would consider to be the correct accounting, that you have services that are provided in-kind to the library and those costs should be reflected in the budget.
Yes.
And should be reflected in the amount the town is effectively providing for the library. There are those in-kind services and there is- There are those in-kind services, and there is direct cash payments that are made to the library. The total of those two is what the town is supporting the library by.
Yes.
And it ought to be reflected in there, and I, I personally think that's good accounting. But it's, you know, there's a, there's an implication there that it's gonna, I don't know what the rent on that building would be, that's actually what we're talking about, isn't it, rent?
Yeah.
Yeah, the equivalent of rent, you know.
We don't charge them rent.
No, I, and I'm, I'm not suggesting it should, but should, would it be beneficial for people to understand when they look at the library budget, that in addition to the cash payment, there are also these in-kind services that are provided?
It thinks, yeah. I mean, it's, I, I just think that it.
I don't think it matters, really, it never has, I mean, I guess if we can, you know, figure out that they're not paying us two hundred dollars on electric bill.
No, 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 no.
It's a big deal, but.
No, it wouldn't be.
Um, it's the library, I mean, this is just what we do, but I guess you're right, it probably would be good if we actually figured out, I mean.
I wouldn't follow my sword over it one way or the other, but I think it was, it was a valid comment that she made, and.
Tom, I, 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 I make this statement every year, and, and it, it hasn't gone anywhere for a number of years, so it's.
Alright.
Well, if we could come up with some way to figure out how much it costs to heat that place, without trying to figure out what, between what we do, it's almost impossible.
But I guess question one, I know question one. But it's okay. Does the board wanna make any changes to this article?
I would not do it this year. We're gonna do what I would consider it for next year.
Alright, um, next article is the contingency, um, so I think that, um, you guys kinda already answered this one, uh, the question was, does the, I heard what Tom said, does the board wanna make any changes about any advice or recommendation from the finance committee, or we're just gonna leave it the way it is?
I would say we just inform them.
You wanna flip that in the article?
But that's what I would suggest, but, you know.
If, if you're gonna inform, you might as well have part of it, it's either one or the other. You know, you, you have to have one or the other. If you, we, we, if we have to inform them, then at that point, we must do a recommendation, if not, we just leave them out of this.
I would just notify them, you know, I would just send them a notice that said, we're, we're drawing on the contingency for the following reasons. And just leave it at that, and if they wish to take a, take a position on that, they can, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect what the board ultimately decides.
No, it doesn't anyway.
No, it, oh.
But I guess we gotta decide whether or not we wanna have that language in there or not.
Does anyone from the Warren find, it looks like.
I, I just, uh, wondering if we should add the line that is in the other, in the, uh.
Two years ago, three years ago?
From two to three years ago?
No, 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 right now, David, uh, something about going out to bid, I, I don't want it very, uh, you know, on the, the first one.
Well, so the first one says.
Fifteen thousand, no.
Right, so it's, no, so what it just said, it would say is, see if the town will authorize the select board to appropriate and expend monies up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars from the general funds unassigned fund ballots for the purchase of equipment, or to use as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies that occur. Expenditures in excess of five thousand, uh, I don't know, so we'd get rid of that whole last line. It doesn't say anything about going out to bid, they have to follow their own policy.
Right, that's my, that's what I was saying.
So the whole, so instead of just saying.
We were discussing, we were talking, what we were discussing was something different.
No, well, yes and no, she, yeah, so we're taking out that bottom line, but I, I heard, I mean, nobody else spoke up, so we're gonna take out that we don't need their advice or recommendation. What she's saying now.
Go by the purchase policy.
Right, but she wants you to add, right now, it's worded, if you look at it, it's worded just to see if the, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifty thousand for contingency, she'd like to see that, the verbiage, that's the last line.
Right.
She may have been out there with, but.
Exactly.
The first part of that, instead of just the single line that's there.
Oh, two.
She wants that whole.
Your, your following policy.
That whole.
Yes, she wants article one with the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that she was, you know, article one, changing the amount, and the board is gonna strike the advice or recommendation.
Right.
Mark has written it just to do a flat fifty thousand for contingency.
That, that's how I'm gonna write it, right, flat?
That's up to you.
Okay, so what, what, so what do you wanna do here?
So, do you see the, the very first article?
I, I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no.
The very first article.
On the first page.
First page, okay, that's why.
So, yeah, so.
So you wanna go back to this one?
Right, so immediately, so the second, uh, yeah, so immediately take the very last line and get rid of it. So scratch that and put, because you guys have agreed that you're not gonna get that recommendation.
Yeah.
So she's saying, instead of go where your thumb was and have a simple one line for contingency, fifty thousand, she's asking you to use the verbiage that's there and just change the fifteen thousand to fifty.
So for the, in the first?
She wants, yes.
Part of the first half of the sentence?
Replace the fifteen.
So the rest of the line will stay.
We've, we've keeping the basic equipment there?
Well, you can use it from whatever.
So if we wouldn't do that whole sentence, then we'd just be ending, uh, unassigned fund bound.
I, I think we make this simple, um, we go along with what we already have. Authorize a selectman to spend fifty thousand dollars in the, uh, contingency fund, that's all we really need.
The difference is right, so Tom, do you, do you want to raise and appropriate the, the fifty thousand for the contingency?
Yeah, but the other one was not.
The other one was unassigned fund bound.
It was on, no, I wanna raise and appropriate that.
So we'll leave it the way it is, that's what I heard.
It's what we did last year with the thirty.
I know, I know.
No, and it, and it should be, because if we don't use it, it's part of the surplus, goes back to the reserve. That's my opinion.
Well, I'm just.
Go ahead, yeah, like you said, this is what we did thirty one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, last year, yeah.
I'd do the same thing, just raise it to fifty and use the same line.
No, I mean, it, it worked, it allowed us to use the money to cover the transfer station.
Yeah.
If, if we, if we pull it out of the indecentated fund, though, okay, we don't have to worry about taxing on that fifty thousand, and it still allows us to go in the indecentated fund to pull it, right?
I suppose, I suppose that's correct, um.
And then we don't have to worry about that fifty thousand dollars in the tax rate. And it was still, it's still available if needed, it's only a contingency, right? I mean, I just a food for thought, so we wouldn't have to do it through taxation.
I think you're right, yeah.
So I don't know, either way, it don't matter to me.
Tom, what's the benefit of raising and appropriating it?
Okay, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, I'm asking it, that's why I'm saying.
I don't know what the benefit.
Yeah, I was just asking.
No benefit, I'm drawing on my past experiences and the way I would handle contingencies, and they were always funded. When we said tuition rates, we included contingencies in that, 'cause if you had to spend them, you don't wanna be drawing on reserves to spend them. And if you have, if you don't spend them, the money goes right into the reserve account, and.
Cause it's not gonna roll over.
Yeah, if you don't spend it, it, yeah.
Oh, no, I, I'm fine with that.
I, I can live any way, Joe.
Trying to find a spot, Tom.
So really, the, the, the first article could read, uh, select board to raise and appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, fifty thousand.
Yeah, and then plug the fifty with a fifteen, then, yeah.
Well, and I would eliminate that line about.
The last line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you, so you wanna swap this one up to the first line and turn.
With the exception of taking.
I got it, I got what you're saying. So he's gonna say, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate
Yeah.
and authorize the select board to expend monies up to a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of equipment, or to use as they deem advisable to meet unanticipated expenses and emergencies.
Yeah.
That occur in fiscal year.
Yeah, that way the money be there, and it says that it happens.
Yes.
Yeah, where you just. Cleaner for the load.
Okay.
I mean, approved the last year.
Does that answer the contingency? Lee's good, we get, I got a thumbs up from Lee, that's good. Alright.
It's clean and easy, that one.
Yeah.
The next one, um, alright, nine thousand for the existing private roads. Alright, so they're.
I, I don't, the name of that really doesn't.
Well, in, in the, um, so, and that was brought up, um, well, it was definitely brought up that, you know, article.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not worried about article forty-three, it just says, private road association fund.
Right.
Okay, you're not supposed to be giving money to private roads, so, uh, I would put it down as a great pond.
Well, let's, well, let's go back, let's look at our article from our special town meeting, how about to see, so, last, I mean, we could take the wording from the last one, we did get some opinions from, from, um, ma- may municipal hasn't come in, but we got one from Mark Royd that I shared with Tom, uh, this is regarding the statutory reserve versus a reserve, no. If you go to that statute, the thirty eight, tw- two twenty-three, subsection seven, the opinion is, is that that is the statute that allows you to create a reserve fund. Whether you call it a statutory reserve fund or a reserve fund, it's the same thing, that statute is, just makes a reserve fund, so he doesn't think the word statutory is required in there. But you could take the wording that you used at the last town meeting, which was copied from two thousand eighteen.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, if that legislation requires you to set up a reserve fund, that would be a statutory reserve. But the legislation does not require you to create this reserve, so it's non-statutory.
No, cause after this one here, after it runs out, it runs out.
Uh, this is clear, 'cause it goes on, instead of saying private road, this says, to assist road assoc- uh, associations in preventing storm runoff. The one that we used at the special is from the original article forty-three, so we could.
Yeah, I like that one.
Move that, okay, so it's still nine thousand dollars, and I did also a confirmation that if the town creates it, the town can vote to, to get rid of it, so when we, when the wording was put in there that it was exhausted, or June thirtieth, whatever comes first, um, the opinion is, is that they have the right to do that, the towns voted that created the reserve can also decide how it's ended.
Right, the town meeting does it.
Right, by the warrant article, right.
Now, what was the, I, I mean, I sent you an email about this, 'cause I went to, I tried to look up.
Yeah, and I replied, the minutes in the video were wrong, I replied right away with the, correct video, so it was up the same day.
I think that, I think it would be in interesting to see what the discussion was on the town floor at that point, which is why I was looking for that.
Back in two thousand eighteen. Well, the video was up the same day you sent the email, so have you had a chance to watch it?
Oh, is it fixed?
Yeah, emails, it was fixed the same day.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that you had.
Yeah, I had emails, and I.
I saw, I saw, it's the issue.
The link wasn't, link wasn't correct.
I'm trying to understand what the real issue is, because, I mean, you've asked that we have money, we set it aside, so whether we do it again next year or not, will be up to what we do next year, so what's your real concern?
The, the concern is the dissolution of that fund, what, when, uh, which is why I try, I wanted to go back and, and watch the, um, town meeting where that was initially set up, is it was our understanding that once that refund, that reserve fund was set up, it could not be dissolved except for, uh, town meeting dissolving it.
We are not dissolving it, we have, I believe, a discretion as to whether we fund it or not. That's, and we being the townspeople, based on the warrant articles that are put forth, but I don't know that we would ever decommission it.
Right, and the article.
Why would we bother? If we aren't gonna put any money in, it just sits there.
But we're, we're putting forward money.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, I don't, you're, you're, you're the chair of the, the finance committee, correct?
Right.
You're up, you're advocating for something there that you're benefiting from, right?
I don't, I don't.
But, but, I, I know you are.
My, my road, my road has been.
I know, but, you know, it's funny, and we have articles that we, we back off from, because I got a contract, and he works with others. There's certain things here that, you know, we don't advocate because, you know, we have a bias, and, you know, we're putting money forward, and you're coming up and, you know, making it like we're not doing our job here or something, but.
I'm not saying that at all.
I, I do have, I do have concern about, there's a bias that you're pushing this narrative through a committee that you chair. And myself, I would refrain from that and have somebody else speak on that.
I mean, I asked a question about, about if that could be, uh, that, I thought that that could not be, uh, dissolved.
But we're not dissolving.
We didn't dissolve anything, we just, the money ran out, nothing said that the money had to be recouped every year. So when that fifty thousand dollars was appropriated six or seven years ago, whatever it was, okay, it depleted. The, the, the select board has done a good thing by going to a special town meeting, putting money forward. Then I think I did a good thing by saying, hey, guys, you know what, we're gonna run out of money again, let's put another nine thousand, just so that our road committee could do their job, and, and, and then, and they're doing it. And, uh, and we had a very good meet last, I think, Jay, we had a very good meet last night, and it's productive, and, uh, honestly, then on the day, uh, we're not dissolving anything, we keep putting money forwards, there shouldn't not be any issue here.
And, and I take offense to the fact that you said I, I, I shouldn't be speaking about this.
You shouldn't be, you shouldn't be speaking about it right now. As a warrant finance committee chair, you should not be speaking on this subject, because you have gains, you got, you got gain.
There is a warrant, there is a warrant in front, so yes.
But guess what, we have warrant articles that we don't speak on, because we have bias too.
Anytime that my road came up, uh, from, uh, and asked for money, I recused myself.
But you're not now.
My road's not asking for money.
But your, 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 your concern is, the other night you asked for fifty thousand dollars in account, no?
I did not, I thought it should be eighteen, I said.
Eighteen, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eighteen thousand, you requested for eighteen thousand dollars in an account the other night, adding warrant finance committee that you collect, your road collects checks from, there's no, there's not an issue there?
If my.
Yes, there is an issue there.
My road is asking for money.
Thank you, if you've got any more questions.
Yeah, that's a common, but it's not right now.
I'm just, just laying it on it, that's all. Dennis?
I have no, uh, investment for, uh, I don't gain anything out of the money for this private road association fund. And I think if you watch the meeting, um, I had brought up that I thought this number should be doubled. And the reason why I had said that was we appropriated nine thousand dollars for six months as a recommendation the road committee had made. That's where the nine thousand dollar figure came up for our special town meeting. So, on that, if we're gonna do a whole year, six months is nine thousand, twelve months, should be eighteen thousand, and that, that's where I was coming from with the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I think the reason why I ca- I came up with the number I did, because at the time, there was still nine thousand dollars in our account, we were putting forward another nine, that's eighteen thousand dollars, we minus out the three thousand the other night, will, which will leave us, um, what I would say, eighteen, fifteen thousand dollars, that, you all.
I gotta, I gotta tell you, but I, I, I went along with the, the nine, for me personally, as I understand it, this benefits a small number of roads, because it's so narrowly defined, it can only support a select group of roads. So it's not broadly supporting private roads that might create runoff, and so personally, I have a problem with that. Uh, I don't think that was probably the original intent when this was done, and so, um, I'm willing to go along, but I'm hoping we can change this going forward, so that there is a, uh, an ability to help all of the roads and protect the runoff that's going into the lakes, that's the bottom line. That's what we ought to be doing, and not just worrying about a half dozen roads that are able to, to get money.
Fortunate enough.
Yeah, that's my view.
With that, plus, how many years did it take us to spend the fifty thousand?
Well, this thing is.
Eighteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen years?
Two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, so, yeah, seven years.
When I voted on, on this nine thousand, it was under the assumption, and I believe it's still going, that there's work being done to find a program, a process that would do exactly what Tom named, so my thought process this night was just as to sustain if any projects did come forward, not to act as the funds had previously, but to make sure that, like David said, the road committee continued to do their job if any requests come in, not as a way to.
The select board are doing it in good faith, because we did not have to put money forward, when that, when that ran out, it ran out.
Well, I think we all explained our positions, so, you know.
So can I finish now?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I thought you had already had it finished, I'm sorry.
No, not at all.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it's my understanding, the warrant article we passed in the special town meeting, that, because of June thirtieth, that money goes away, goes in the end days of the fund balance. So we can't add that money to the nine thousand, so we got fifteen thousand, 'cause that money's going away.
Assuming it's not spent.
No, we're, we're, we're assuming that that money's gonna be spent.
Even if it's not spent, it doesn't matter.
But if it's not, if it's not spent, if it's not spent, we still put nine thousand ahead, so if we don't spend that nine thousand dollars, well, it'll be six thousand now, 'cause it'll be three thousand's gone, that means there must be not, must not be a call for it in the spring, I would say. So there's no sense in having that money floating around, so, um, I believe this is, uh, done in good faith, and we're putting plenty of money aside right now to do what we have to do, um.
What was the re- the recommendation the road committee on this?
The road committee, when I talked to them last night, um, obviously, they would like more, but I feel they were fine with Jay, uh, uh, I mean, was there?
No, I specifically asked for more.
Yeah, but you didn't give me a number.
Okay, thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, that ain't half. Okay, that ain't happening. So, I mean, thirty, I mean, thirty thousand dollars, we go from nine to thirty, I mean, I.
We started with fifty.
Yeah, okay, well, what, what, what's the rest of the board wanna do here? And this is why.
How long do you think we're gonna be before we have a different plan?
Well, I, I, as far as.
We'll give them the longest it's gonna take.
Yeah, I mean, maybe a year. Last time we did it, we put the fifty thousand in there, because that was what we put in to go a good long time. We didn't know how long it was gonna go.
Actually, I think it had longer than we thought it was.
I think it did too, yeah. We didn't know how many roads we're gonna put in for. So, I mean, if, if we think we're gonna have a new plan in place in six months, three months, or a year, um, either the nine or the eighteen.
So can I just say, if you take fifty thousand dollars and you divide it by the seven years, it's seven thousand, so seven thousand, so in nine thousand.
Yep. So the nine would work.
We've already done the math, but the, the unfortunate part about it is this, when I, and I, Jay, you remember what I said last night? And I did say this, that when we, we approved the article forty-three, it was under different circumstances what it ended up being, okay? Because when they, when the statutes and everything came out, you had to have, and narrowed that window down so small, that, that's why there's only a handful of roads are able to get the money, okay? And cause we're trying to get it so that we can have the lake association, so we get, make turns it broader and this and that. But I did make a, a statement last night that I do believe that if we were to put this on town floor, this may fail. Because, um, they were sold a bag of no goods last time, and, uh, you know, yeah, I guess those certain roads that get their money, they would flock to town hall, uh, town meeting and try to get through, but, um, at this point in time, I recommend the nine thousand dollars. I think it's generous enough.
I'm okay with it, yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Very ambivalent that we're putting no money for private roads, but not all private roads can, can use it.
Yeah, and, and with the list that we got last night, that was a pretty impressive list, list that Jay gave, and it.
What was that list?
It, it showed all the private roads, mileage, the roads that actually received the money, ones that don't receive the money, um, then the roads that aren't even able to even, you know, be part of it.
They don't qualify.
Yeah, because they're not part of the great pond. And it really justified it, because it was like, holy cow, that's a huge list of roads. And then you see a blur, P, and this one got some money, and then this one got a bunch of it, you know, and then this one didn't, and, um, so I think, I think that a lot of the people saw that piece of paper, they would wonder why that the rest of them aren't getting it.
I like, I like the term you used, good faith, cause I think we need to look at the bigger picture, and the bigger picture is from what I've seen. This board is working with the road committee to do something that's gonna benefit more people, and that focusing on that set number, again, that is supposed to be a temporary number until we can get something that is more beneficial to more people.
And that's what we're working on. So, uh, does the board agree that this nine thousand dollars is sufficient for now?
So what I heard is we're leaving the nine thousand, but I'm gonna redo the wording to better mirror the pri- the previous article.
Yes, yes, yes.
And the other clarification that I wanna make is even though I use Lakeside Drive, which you guys did tonight, is the road association that, uh, does all the paperwork, and this is the association. But there's roads off that Lakeside Drive that also benefit from it. And there's a lot of roads that have roads off Lakeside Drive. Uh, I don't know how many roads are off Lakeside Drive from one end to the other, but I also know there's probably a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty houses on that road. And so that's a huge benefit to more than just that one particular road association, is for multiple roads.
I have no problem with helping Lakeside Drive, let be clear. I, if they need the, the resource, if they need the work done, and it's something appropriate for us to do, I believe that I have no problem with helping them. I just would like to make sure that everyone can play at the game in the same way fairly. That's my only concern. And right now, they can't, and I think that's, that's a problem. I, I, if I was on one of those other roads that couldn't, I would, I'd be one of, well.
Bolsh Lake.
I remember Bolsh Lake was the one that helped push through that, that ordinance, and then, like, guess what, they didn't, they weren't even, they weren't able to get the money.
That's my only point, Dennis. Nothing, I don't mind helping anyone.
Oh, I thought.
No, we did through our charities, but Bolsh Lake does not qualify through article forty-three.
Oh, I thought that you guys gave them some money in the.
We did once, and then come to find out, what happened, they didn't qualify.
Right, I'm just saying, so you have.
Because they didn't have a lake study and this and that, so that, that's the gripes that I have, and, um.
What's that?
That was the gripe that I had, that roads like that weren't able to get the money.
Well, we got a hundred and twenty roads in town that don't get that money.
Exactly, exactly. And so if you'd come to the road committee meet last night, you would have understood, you would have heard what kind of a plan we're trying to put through to see if we get everybody a little bit of something.
I watched the road committee meeting yesterday last night, and the late donations are still gonna address all the private lines.
I, I, you got the solution, so, um.
No, it's not a solution.
Nope. That's why nothing gets done, and, and it's not politics, Dennis.
If I, if I could, and I know that you passed, and we appreciate that, I just wanna come up and reiterate, this is not building roads for anybody.
No.
This is not about helping the road, this is about helping the lake. And every dollar that was spent has helped the lake remain what it is today. Now, it would be great if other projects could help this out, and maybe we could find that way to do it, and that's what we're working on now. But this is.
Jay, you, you gave me a list last night of all the roads, right, with the mileage, okay? Out of all those, all those miles of road that you gave me, okay, how many miles of road actually get affected by that article forty-three?
Um, I, I haven't done the math.
Five miles.
But everybody that does qualify does the work to help the lake, not the road, it's the lake.
And nobody said that's not happening.
Well, you, no, but you keep on saying, oh, I don't think it's fair that they got this many, um, uh, projects. It's because they're stopping the pollution getting into the lake. So they should be honored.
You're not, you're not getting the drift. You're not getting the drift here. What the problem is, is, like I just said, you have a handful of roads that are allowed to have, get the money.
And thankfully, they are.
Uh, thank, definitely. Nobody said they shouldn't be getting it, okay? But if you have a handful of roads, and say it's about seven miles of road, but there's forty-five miles of road, that means a small percentage of those, that lake is being helped out because you're only taking care of this spot, this spot, not this spot.
So what do we say, that we should just, okay, not give them money?
No, no.
No, I guess.
Jay, there may be other roads that, where they addressed, would have a better impact, a higher impact on the, on preventing runoff, uh, into the lakes, and right now, we're not able to do that.
The law does not allow that. The law does not allow it.
No, I understand that, and I, I get it, I get it. We're trying to get to a place where we can hopefully get the money spent, where it has the biggest bang for the buck.
Right, but it's not.
No, that's really what it's all about.
It's not by cutting back on article forty-three, so that's the only thing I want to bring up.
Okay.
Okay, uh, where are we now?
All right, so the next article, um, that we're gonna discuss is the Hawk Road Private Project Fund, and there were no concerns with that article. Uh, next is the Lebanon Road Project Fund, and there was also no concerns with that one. Uh, down to the last couple, the, uh, Erdkane, Erdkane League Fund, liquidating that is not a problem. Uh, Will, I'm gonna ask you to stay for this last one, all right now? You were so close, but you came up several times at the finance meeting on this one, so I wanna make sure you're here. The last article, last piece of discussion is, uh, City of Town will vote to liquidate the Bridge and Culver's Capital Fund. That was recommended from Mark Roy, based on it not being used for X many years. There was a lot of talk about Roe Bridge. We looked at the Road Commissioner ordinance sum that talked about, you know, you reporting out by November first with concerns if you had them. Um, and you hadn't moved anything forward on this, so.
I didn't even know it was a thing.
What do you mean?
What's that?
Oh, the, the account stood?
I didn't even know it was a thing.
Okay, that's valid point. Yeah, that's, that's good to know.
You're talking about the project going?
Yeah. I didn't even know it was a thing, to be honest.
And there was a discussion about it the other night, that the money should be used to fix the road bridge, you know, the patching it up or something. You've already budgeted that correctly.
No, I didn't even do it.
Well, yeah, it was on one of your projects, they talked about it. It was on your, um.
Maybe it was.
Yeah, they had it.
Do a couple of small things, but not, not.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna redo the bridge.
Not the patch, and the patch, when I got the number last year, the patch was like forty, fifty grand to do the work, so I mean.
So where's that in your plans? Are you planning to get to it sometime, or?
Oh, no, probably not. I can't spend fifty grand on it, but I'm gonna do.
Well, no, but you've got the money here with the.
Out of this account. He, what are you saying? He didn't know this account was there. Would you do it out of this account?
Yeah, with, with.
Oh, if I had that money, yeah, I'd do the Godrails out of that, I'd do the concrete work, I'd do the patch, and I'd, oh, I thought you ran out of my summertime.
Well, you, does any of the finance committee, I'm sorry, do you have what he submitted? Cause you submitted some work for Roe Bridge, like.
Yeah, but I didn't know we had that account.
Okay, well, talk, talk to, just tell us briefly what you move forward for the budget.
I don't, I don't remember.
Okay.
I love him. So while he's getting that, is it, with David, Tom, uh, the rest of you, does it change your mind about consolid- about liquefying, about liquidating this if he has a project for Roe Bridge?
Exactly.
I, I would change my mind a lot. I think that's something that.
I, I would only do it if I knew that it was all in this year's docket.
Oh, yeah, I get, well, you get the Godrails coming in the spring.
So you were gonna fund them out the other one?
I don't know, it's in, I don't believe it's in that, I don't know.
It is, it is.
I think it is.
It's in the maintenance project.
It is, isn't it?
There's no, there's no more about.
It's maintenance.
It's just listed as a project.
So.
So what can you get me in twenty-four hours?
What do you, what do you want, a price?
The cost of the project.
The cost of what you think it would take to repair it?
Okay, yeah, I need to see the warrant.
Does the board want to? I mean, the finance committee's supposed to be making recommendations on Monday, so I need some.
Yeah, what's the big deal about liquidating it then?
They're trying to clean up all the reserve.
Well, I don't, but I, I had no idea it was a thing.
No, that's okay.
No, no, we're not blaming you.
No, it's not about you, right. It's been there for many years, probably, maybe before you were elected originally. The account has been there for many years, it hasn't been touched. That's why Mark recommended liquidating it.
I mean, we can liquidate it.
The finance committee is saying that there's work to be done on Roe Bridge, so why not use it for that? That was their point last night.
Oh, all right, yeah.
So, we'll connect to you guys.
If you can get it by tomorrow morning, I'm in favor of that, just saying.
I mean, the, I mean, the Godrails alone is twenty-two thousand. I mean, there's twenty-two. The wa- the price I got from, um, a company that does all the patching on the bridge, was I think it was just shy of fifty thousand.
My only question is, if you do this work, does it extend the life, or are we gonna have to replace this bridge?
Oh, like the, the, the patching of it is just gonna get us another five years. That's all it's gonna do.
So that's not really worth spending fifty thousand dollars.
I guess that's what.
But I think that's what we got, now, my, I think that's what we got to in, when I got the original price. So at this point, should I take the hundred thousand, should I take the hundred thousand, call our engineer up and have engineer a new bridge?
No, no, I think that's something we wanna do on a.
I, I understood that bridge, we had gotten the bridge report from the state that had, uh, indicated that it had serious problems.
Serious problems, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's why it needs to be patched. That was the, if you, if you read the letter from Jim, not Jim Foster, but the guy that does all the reports. Yeah, um, he sent me a separate letter for Roe Bridge, and you gotta put the Godrails, fix the concrete, and you gotta patch it. Or I think, I, I wanna say it, it could be eligible to be shut down.
So i- if you do that, how much additional life do we get out of the bridge? It's the question. And, and, I mean, I think it's a, a question an engineer could, could answer.
Right, they won't, at the state, they'll tell you like a couple of years, but I'm, I mean, I'd move five at least.
I don't know, if it's a couple of years, I'd say, geez, I don't know, I won't spend. How much do you think it might be? Fifty, a hundred?
Uh, I think the price I got last year from, I think it was fifty, but I mean, you're, there's a lot of work there, then, like I said, staying, you know, I mean, there's a lot of work to be done right there.
A lot of work under the bridge, I think.
Well, that was a big thing. They gotta get under the bridge. That was the, that's the biggest concern with them, is under the bridge.
Look, we don't wanna throw good money after bad, and so, um.
Well, I mean, I don't know if I should take the money and like, I mean, we've already had it engineered once, but, I mean.
Have we? It's been engineered?
We did, we, uh.
Well, we did the other one, and that's right about that.
That's what they're talking about, having my houses and houses and stuff.
No longer than that, it was.
Is this where you're gonna have to take the bend out of the road?
I don't even, I, I don't even, I've never seen the original plans, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, they're pretty.
So we're, I mean, we're in the last hour here, so the options are liquidate it and put Roe Bridge at the top of your capital plan that Mark is working on, or give them, you know, for the future.
I, I gotta tell you, I, I guess after all this, I would just leave the money where it is, but I would, I would develop a plan for Roe Bridge.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And, yeah, let's, let's find out. If it's worth repairing, great. If it isn't, let's, let's.
Well, we're behind, I mean, we, we gotta figure out, or we talked about this for a long time, whether or not, you know, no one's gonna split this with us, what's gonna happen.
So do you wanna hold off, take it off for this year's warrant, to try to make a plan?
Yeah, I don't think there's any rush in taking the money off. I mean, start another year, it's nice to clean up, but.
Even if we have to use it for engineering costs.
And that's why, that's why I think if we start going that route, I'm.
So we start, we decide we have, we just have something.
Just like we, we're gonna talk about engineering, I mean, it took us five years to get West Road Drive situated, I mean.
Yeah.
Was it that long?
No, the twenty nineteen was recent.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My first year's Roe Bridge, I was, we did it last year, so.
What's the direction of the work?
I've been favored taking it off and seeing where, yeah, leave the, leave the reserve where it is, but I would, I'm not quite sure what the process should look like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The road committee could probably help, uh, with this, but I would like.
We'll be able to spend out of that account unless we approve it.
Right, that's right.
And, so he would come to us.
Yeah.
I would like to understand what cost should she, we should take? Should we repair it, or which? Can be left as it is, does it need to be repaired, or do we need to replace it? And understa- understand what the cost and the trade-off is.
When I talked to the gentleman from the state, I mean, they, they would tell you that, well, if you do the patching, you get another five years out of it, but I mean, by the time you do the patching and all that, I mean, you're gonna be, we, it's double absorb, really.
Yeah, so we, we talked to Mr. Bean.
Michael.
Mr. Bean, and, uh, he's the one who did our bridge up there on, uh.
Canal Road.
Yeah, Canal Road, and, uh.
Yeah, he did the Shapley one, didn't he, on every road?
He did the Shapley one, and they're talking about having to do another one, and, uh, I, I don't think we got anybody to scare him off now, cause.
Yeah.
So, um, so, yeah, well, those, you know, he, 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 I don't think he was gonna come back to work for us, you know?
There was some discussion.
But I, I, I do think that we ought to ca- in contact.
I think we ought to contact him and.
And see, because, I mean, the engineer plan that we got was so crazy, cause they're talking about the bridge, the dam getting taken, which, you know, da, 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 da.
I don't think that's.
So, um, maybe that's something, maybe, um, Will can do.
Yeah, that's what I can go on.
So, um, should we, uh, do that, yeah?
So for tonight, though, you just wanna take the article off?
Yeah, leave it off.
Leave it off, and then we'll, after we get through the warrant, we'll catch up with the honor bridge.
All right.
So we'll take it off.
Do you want me to call him in the meantime?
Let's pull everything we have, and we'll review it, and then you can work with David as a lead.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't do anything until we have a, maybe, uh, at a future agenda, we get a chance to talk about it, or maybe you could look into it a little bit.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
That is the last warrant article.
So does the warrant finance committee have any questions?
Um, just, uh, just to clarify, when, when we'll be receiving the warrant?
Well, your meeting is on Monday.
Right.
So.
So we won't see it before that?
Well, you, you essentially have a draft in your hand, you've got a draft, so if you're trying to review and prep for it, there's minimal changes of any, we've heard what they are. I mean, a, a perfect one, I mean, you will have it as soon as possible, but the draft that you had for Monday's meeting is gonna change minimally, so, you know, if you're looking to, to spend the weekend reviewing it, that would be a good copy to use.
All right.
But I will do my best to get it to you tomorrow or Friday.
Okay, and you, you said that the, um, Cemetery Committee has a meeting on Monday?
Um.
They have one scheduled for Monday.
Well, they shouldn't, because the warrant finance has it. No, she actually moved it.
Oh, she did?
She did, I mean, actually, a good point, uh, but.
What committee is that?
Cemetery. Cemetery, no, because we, we emailed her and told her that it wasn't, uh, hold on, let me just look. Yeah, so the, um, Finance Committee is definitely scheduled for Monday, the tenth, so we will double check with Cemetery, she's on. I'll double check their meeting date, um, but you definitely have to.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that there was a conflict.
You have it.
Okay, all right, and then if we, you know, as soon as we, you have that ready, if you could just shoot it off to us.
I think I just held dry wood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, okay, we are on top of the warrant, correct?
That's all.
Okay, awesome. A beam in.
Beam in, so there is, um, property tax map two forty-six. Abatement, so there is, um, property tax map two forty-six, lot twenty-five. The assessors have, um, reviewed the, um. Reason for the abatement, the value was adjusted to reflect the limitations of the property. Uh, land value went from one oh three eight to ninety-five eight. The building value is eight, uh, thirty-six thousand down to twenty-eight thousand. So it's an abatement, lower taxation of thirteen. Sixteen thousand, one thirty-seven evaluation, hundred and fourteen dollars.
Uh, do we need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Uh, give me a moment to get the, uh, make a motion to approve an abatement of a hundred and fourteen dollars. On, um, Act in Map Lot two four six dash zero two five.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Can't wait, huh? It's thirty.
I, I know that.
I know, but it's so long, I'm waiting for it to go out, you know, it didn't, it didn't.
I mean, it's not even packed up yet.
Oh, it's, you know, stuck. Oh, because it's stacked.
I've been learning from my, my stack.
Towards the door.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome, okay. I guess, um, I'm asking some public comment. Is that ready? Let's know. Okay, um, you guys got anything?
Just one thing.
What's that?
Make just one thing, make a motion to adjourn.
Go here a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.